Extremely proud to have Senator Richard Shelby here with us today. And we had an opportunity last week just to meet with him a couple nights ago.
Tell them where you were.
Was at Root Chris Steakhouse, actually. Washington, D.C.
I was going to say we had a hot dog stand.
Yeah. Hey, Mayor. Senator, what is it you want to turn over to you? Let's just speak to us and tell us what's going on.
You've got another mayor here.
We do. Bill C. Gray.
Yeah.
May you have a couple more coming for us one day?
Well, thank you. He wanted to go. We had a group from northwest Alabama. Some of them are in the room today. They come up and they tell us some of the challenges they have because of what Congress and the administration have done to them. We'll do it, and hopefully we'll help them with some things which they're challenged with in trying to create conditions for jobs and better opportunities here. I look forward to it. You had a pretty good crowd Wednesday night. Wednesday night, they know how to cook a good steak, which I don't need. I love, you know? And I look forward to seeing you. It's good to be back here in Alabama. The weather's a little better here. People, I think, I'm a little biased, always better. But I appreciate, one, now you let us come into your place now.
Absolutely. I'm honored.
And if you, if there's a rent to the place, send it to the mayors.
Awesome.
But I do appreciate it seriously, to give you the chance to meet and interface with your people here if they want to. And let me talk to you just a few minutes. I've been coming to this county a long time. I've been coming here, come in, sir, coming here for different meetings at the courthouse, at the city halls, in just about every town, and I wouldn't say every community in this county, but close to it. But I've been coming here 27 years. And I think it's important for me to come home. I'm from Tuscaloosa. People think I live in Washington, but I don't. I'm just up there because you sent me there. And that is our capital. It belongs to you and to me and the people of the United States, and we shouldn't forget that. But I like to come home to have a conversation with you about some of the serious things happening in this country, good and bad and indifferent. And secondly, and maybe more importantly, to give you a chance to have access to me. I come before you. I have no bodyguards and I'm unarmed, but I do have guns. I bet you do, too. And I want you to keep them. But that will be one of the issues coming up in Washington. You saw where the Senate Judiciary Committee voted out a bill. All Democrats voted for it, all Republicans voted against it, right? That would restrict your rights to firearms. I'm not one of those people. I've been around guns all my life. I have guns. I have a right, set offense. I'm trying to get my wife to get a gun because somebody rang her doorbell at 2:00 in the morning one night to check her house out. Told she needed a German Shepherd dog sitting there, an alarm, and a gun. And you don't know in today's world what's out there. We all deplore what happened in Connecticut, you know, when somebody misuses a firearm. We had a woman with two children. One was an achiever and one was challenged emotionally, probably mentally. She taught him to use guns. You taught him everything about a gun. Probably liked going to the Marine basic training. He winds up killing her and then killing all of his children, which is terrible. Horrible, horrible tragedy. We have over 300 million people here. And I hope nothing like that ever happens again, but there will be tragedies. But are we going to punish the people in the country for that? We have about 300 million people and about 300 million guns in this country. The Washington Post, I've told this story around the state, about several weeks ago, the big paper there, they did a survey. They pushing guns. They don't want you to have a gun for anything, but basically, but let's think, okay. And said, how many guns do the various senators have? They did a survey and they called my office, said, how many guns does Senator Shelby have? And the answer was, he has enough. And that, I think, that you do seriously have a right under the Second Amendment to have firearms. I hope you will use them well, protect people, make sure it's not in the wrong hands. But we can legislate everything, I don't think that way, you know? But we're there today. I think there's too much violence on television. Our children, too many video games of violence. Just you turn up, go to a movie tonight, and I bet you eight out of 10 are about violence. That spawns a lot of that. Hollywood tell you, that's First Amendment rights, First Amendment Constitution. Well, people with guns got Second Amendment rights, too. But a lot of it's common sense. A lot of it is protecting people that need protecting or someday. I'd like to share with you a couple of things. One, you know, I tell people everywhere, this is a great country. We think it is. It is. It has been probably the greatest country in the world during my lifetime. We still produce more manufactured goods, more food and fiber, more services than any nation in the world. China's coming right behind us, though, coming up on our heels, and some people say will surpass us in a few years. But despite all that, and collectively being the wealthiest country in the year, world, we are the largest debtor country in the world. Now, people might think that doesn't matter to people here in Hamilton, Alabama, but it does. Everything we do in Washington affects you in some way. I just want to show you a chart if I can. Show it up here. I carry this with me. I'm wearing it out. This is the number one issue in this country, whether you're a Democrat, whether you're a Republican, Libertarian, Independent, or what. You should want a strong economic system, not a debt, a debtor nation, not a nation that's on the road to financial bankruptcy and disruption. But I show you this chart because it means a lot. This tells a good narrative here. 1980, which seems like yesterday, after about 200 years as a nation, we only still owe $900 billion as a nation. But look how it's grown each year. 10 years later, not 200 or 300 years later, we're at 3.2 trillion. 10 years later, we're at 5.6 trillion. Then we're at 13 and a half trillion, 10 years later. In three years from 2010 to 2013, which we're in now, we have borrowed 3 trillion dollars. But we're slated to go to 26 trillion. Look at the graph. Does this affect you? It's going to affect the young people more than anybody in this country. It's going to affect your children and your grandchildren, the standard of living in that house. Because no nation in the world has ever had this kind of debt. And are we doing anything about it? No. We're playing at the margins. That brings me to sequester. A lot of people are, oh, sequester's going to destroy the country, the economy. Sequester, probably good policy, bad process. You know, I voted against it because it's meat acts approach to where we should do our work in Congress and cut out the bad, not the good, because there are good programs in there. But we haven't done our work. But we're going to have to deal with it. And the other thing, the fastest growing part of our budget is entitlements. Entitlements, which are sacred programs to a lot of people, for most people. Two-thirds of our budget. How are we going to deal with it? Are we going to deal with it? When are we going to deal with it? I think that's real important, and you're going to have to have political courage to do it. Social Security, for example, that's a good program. My two sons, they think they'll never get anything out of it, probably won't, you know? But to the older people that are drawing Social Security, it's a very, very important program. But it never has been actuarially sound. Medicare is a fast-growing program. Medicaid is. Not funded, not properly funded. So how can we extend Social Security to baby boomers? 10,000 Americans are retiring every day as baby boomers. People born in 1946 own, every day. Will they draw Social Security? Will they have enough? Probably for a while. But will the people 45 years old be drawing Social Security? They've done the math. They don't feel good about it, and they're probably right. Could we extend Social Security? We could by running the age. We live longer. Medicine's better. Food's better. We have better medical care, you know, than we've ever had. Will we do it? And will we do it right, or will we say, oh, we're just going to beat the horse to death? I hope we won't. But these are going to be some of the big issues that can face you and me and this country. There's no easy answer to it. I believe it's time that the Democrats and the Republicans put the nation first, what's best for the nation. We know what's best for the nation. A strong economic system, a strong monetary system, not a debtor nation, not a nation that lurches from crisis to crisis. That's not the America I grew up with. It's not the America I want to have in the future. But it's good to see all of you, be with you. It's a beautiful day. Any comments or questions you might have, we'll go for them.
Senator, what's going on with the banking world? I know you're on top of it.
What's happened in the banking world? Well, we got one banker here, probably some others. They're still solid and open. That's good. But we've had a lot of challenges in the banking world. We, you know, starting in '07, we realized that some of our banks were basically insolvent. Basically, some of our biggest banks that had engaged in stuff that was not anything near what we call safety insolvent. Some of those banks, I thought should have been closed. They did close a lot of small banks, but they treat small banks differently from the big banks, which I think is wrong. I've been chairman of the Banking Committee. I've been on, I've been fortunate up there. I'm not the czar. If I were, I would do more things, but you don't want a czar. You don't want a king. But the banking system has been abused, abused by people. There are a lot of good people in banking. We've got to have banking because we have a market economy. We want a market economy. I still don't believe that any bank is too big to fail. I don't believe any business is too big to fail. I'm totally against that. I think if they fail and we bail them out, we're rewarding failure. You don't reward failure. You know, we do fail. I failed in many things, but I learned and started again. So our banking system, some of our banks are getting healthier, thank God. I think they need capital. I don't believe there's any substitute for capital. But some of our regulators, the FDIC, the Federal Reserve, and Control of the Currency and others, they're treating all banks the same, but they're not all the same. You can't take risk out of the marketplace. You can't take risk out of banking, but you ought to have a calculated risk, you know, a reasonable risk, a rational risk. I do worry about the Federal Reserve, and I used to be a big proponent of the Federal Reserve. I've been on the Banking Committee longer than anybody in the United States, and I've chaired it twice. I now have become the top Republican on appropriation, but I'm a senior member of banking, and I'm involved in these issues. I believe the Federal Reserve didn't do their work as a bank regulator during the run-up of the banking crisis. They were the primary regulator of the holding companies, you know, of the bank holding company, the biggest banks. I used to ask Chairman Greenspan, when I was chairman of the committee, we'd have a hearing in the Senate Banking Committee, it's all in the records, on the conditions of the bank, banking system, meaning the big banks and others. He would always say it's good, but it wasn't good. It was shaky. He was not telling the truth. You know, he didn't, he either didn't know it, or, you know, but he should have. Well, that led to the bank crisis, as we referred to earlier. The Federal Reserve, right now, is doing something they've never done before on this scale. They're buying the paper up of the federal government, the deficit, the debt. It's not China. China is buying a lot, but the Federal Reserve is buying more. The Federal Reserve is printing money, and they own, have in their portfolio over $3 trillion in growing of paper, you know, I'll use. And someday, that's going to have to be deleveraged. So they're aiding and abetting the next banking crisis or the next crisis in the country, I think. You understand?
Senator, would you touch on Corridor X? I know you're a veteran.
Corridor X.
You met on that.
Oh, yeah.
We need it.
Well, I tell this story because it's a true story. I was here in Hamilton, Alabama. I believe it was 1996. And some people in Hamilton, Alabama, asked me after the meeting, because I didn't have another meeting, would I go out and look at what they call Corridor X, just a few miles into Alabama, in Mississippi? I said, sure. I wasn't familiar with it much. You know, Tom Bellman, he got started some, but it stopped, it was just dead end. And I drove into Mississippi, a four-lane highway and everything, and I thought, hmm. Fast forward about four months later, in the spring of '97, April, about like this, coming up. We had a big highway bill coming up in, for the U.S. Senate, the U.S. House. I stopped it one day till I got a couple of hundred million dollars to jumpstart Corridor X and the promise of another 400, 500 million, because the money is going to be spent somewhere on roads and bridges. And we jump-started that. If I hadn't been in Hamilton that day and y'all hadn't educated me maybe, you know, and showed me, Corridor X probably wouldn't ever be built. It's going to be Interstate 22. We named it that. They're building now, you're probably familiar, right north of Birmingham, the Graysville area, a very expensive, very sophisticated interchange, I-65, I-22, you know, and right below it. It's going to open up, I don't know the timetable construction, I'd say another year, you know, something like that. It's going to open up northwest Alabama like you've never seen. And northwest Alabama's never had this kind of road through here. So I say, thank you for bringing it to my attention in 1996, and I was fortunate to get it moving. And you'll benefit from it, and all of America will benefit. I own no land. I couldn't buy any of that, you know? But you're going to see some development here. People are going to find this area for the right reasons. I think it'll be some jobs. It won't happen overnight, but you can see it. People notice it. So I don't know if it'll be a year. How long, do you have any timetable?
I hear 2014.
Yes, next year, sometime next year.
Well, hallelujah.
When we open it up, let's open it up a fanfare.
I was hoping to see it before I die.
Somebody told me one time they were going to balance the budget in 2043. I said, Lord, you know, most of us are going to be dead then. Are you kidding? That man don't do it.
Is there any plans for rest area?
I believe that Russell, what you brought up? We were riding, I was riding with my friend Russell Carruthers, and he brought that up. I don't run the state, you know, the governor and the State Highway Department, Transportation. Your state senator could tell you more about that than I could. But if it's like everything else, you want rest areas and you want economic growth. You want some industrial parks, you know, access to that interstate, access to railroads. So that's what you need to do. Okay?
That's fine. Can you tell me about the North Korea situation?
North Korea? Well, North Korea is a very unstable country with a very irrational and unstable leader with nuclear weapons and the ability to deliver them, and they keep adding to their expertise with missiles. They're irrational enough, I guess, he is the leader, to do anything in the military. Give you a little background on North Korea. North Korea is a very repressive regime. It has been communist regime. The people, if you've seen some of the pictures of some of the children, a lot of them have gone through malnutrition. They don't get the proper food. They feed the army, but they don't feed their children. Only nation in the world I've never seen that didn't feed their children. You know, you'd do without feeding your children and grandchildren. You know, that's just common sense. You know, any nation just about in the world would, we would, but they haven't. The gross, the per capita income in North Korea is something like $400 a year, something like that. And their cousins and brothers and uncles cross the line, which is twice the size of South Korea, North Korea in population, is about 20, I think it's $28,000 a year. So you can tell the difference between the kind of system they have and so on, but they're dangerous. We realize that they will do something. That makes Japan very nervous, you know? North Korea, Japan have had their problems over the years. Japan could go to nuclear weapons fast. They have not done that because they have nuclear power plants there, they have the engineering, science background to do it all. It wouldn't be like Iran. They would do it very fast, and I think really for defensive reasons. But we have to be careful with that, and I think we cannot play with a guy like that. He could ignite a nuclear confrontation. I hope it never will. Then we got Shelby over to Iran. We've got to worry about that a little bit, but other people worry more than we do. Iran, a very nation much richer in money because of oil and gas. They're determined with the help of China and Russia to build nuclear, have nuclear weapons. That'll destabilize the whole Middle East. We've put sanctions on them. I've been involved in all this, you know, choke off their economy, earn them, wherever we can, short of war. I think we should be careful about getting into wars because we get into them, we don't know how to get out of them, and we don't know how much they cost and what and when. You ever thought of that? But if we can prevent that, but the world is a dangerous place. I served on the Defense Appropriations Committee, funds everything. Well, I serve on the Committee, funds everything, you know, I'm a top Republican, so he's trying to keep me going. I've been talking too much. So he brought me, brought up North Korea. I added a little to it, sorry. Anybody?
How confident are you, Senator Shelby, that sanctions will keep this suppressed with North Korea and Iran?
Well...
We're going to run out one day.
There are sanctions. Will sanctions work? They haven't worked with North Korea. You know, North Korea, who is really an impoverished nation, have got nuclear weapons, and now they, with the help of China and Russia and others, they have missiles to deliver. Iran doesn't have that yet. They're trying to get there. Sanctions haven't worked, I believe, overall, well, let's be honest with each other, haven't worked at all with North Korea. They're choking and pinching Iran right now. Will it be enough? Will it be too late? I don't know, but the Banking Committee has jurisdiction of that. I've been involved with it for years, to choke it off everywhere we can and maybe try to bring them to their senses. You know, the whole Middle East is a dangerous place, you know? You take Iran, of course, they're not Arabs, you know, they're Persians, but they have some kind of a democracy, but it is fundamentalist Shia, Shiite. And in the whole Middle East, look at Egypt, look at Libya, look at the whole area, look at Syria right now. As you go to democracies, which we like, you know? Will it work there, or will it be fundamental Islamic? Will it run? I'm afraid that's what it'll be. The radicals of them.
Senator Shelby, shifting back to domestic policy, speaking of political courage, budget deficit and so on, is there anyone looking specifically at Social Security disability reform? It's a position, and I see Social Security disability abuse everywhere we look, and it seems to create more dysfunction and more lack of production than it helps.
Well, he's talking about obtaining disability benefits under the Social Security Act. It's been growing so fast. If we have a recession, then it seems to just grow like toxic. I think we should look at everything. We should look at that, and if you're really disabled and you come under the law, you ought to get your benefit. But for people who are trying to game the system, that hurt the system, you know, to destroy the system. And I don't think that there's been enough scrutiny or...
A lot of the disability is very subjective.
Well, I know it. I know it. That's what I'm saying. But there hasn't been enough scrutiny on that.
Is there any political will to look at that, or is that one of those political courage issues?
That's a good question. I think, I'd look at anything. I think that the country is more important than whether somebody got another voter, got elected again. That's what's wrong with Washington. You'd have to have that, but you know, we could do some oversight and see the trend, and we need facts, you know, we need some real statistics, because there will be a fight, you know, either way. I've always said, people, I've had people come to me that it's not exactly the same thing you're talking about, but they said, well, so-and-so is drawing two pigeons. I said, I don't care if he draws five, if he earned them. If he didn't earn them, that's different. But disability, the same way. If they are disabled in the confines of the law, do it, but if they are not disabled and they're gaming the system, they're hurting the whole, hurting everybody.
I would just comment by saying, because of the subjectivity, the statistics can be misleading.
I think you've got to look, when you compile data, you've got to look at what makes up the data, have you?
Sure.
You did. Anybody? I mean, join the water if they want to talk. Mayor, how you doing? How'd you get into this city?
Slipped in the back door.
Slipped back door, and they gave you a two-hour pass.
Right.
But if you did shop and buy something, it'd be four hours.
I'll spend some money for it.
Go ahead. How you doing?
Doing good, thank you.
Tell them what's going on in your town like is going on here, and tell them to come there and spend money.
Well, I think they all know I'd love their money. Corridor X has been a heaven sent for all of us, and I think that's where our future lies, and we're all trying to develop and make use of that road. And again, thank you for the work that you've done. It'll pay off long after you're gone. And so we, we're all trying to make this the highway.
Tell them what you're trying to do for your town as far as, in relation to it. They'd be doing the same. This is, it's bigger than just one road.
Sure, sure. It's an industrial park, trying to create jobs. That's the big thing. I get asked that every day, and I'm sure Wade does. We want our kids to have the opportunity to come back and live here. We raised good kids in this county, and then we've been sending them off to another city, another county, and then providing the opportunity for them. And that's what, why I ran, is want a lot of these, make things better. And I think we've got to work together as a group, as a region, to continue to draw the industries and jobs in the future. And we started with a commercial park and the industrial park. New Holiday Inn is just under construction and hopefully be open soon. And again, without that road, that would have never happened. So it's expensive, infrastructure is, if these parts go in, we still need help, but we're all thinking on the right path.
I'll direct this to both of the mayors here. I don't get to ask many questions, you know? I'm always getting barraged. But has the area been able up to now to access any of the suppliers coming out of Tupelo? Or is it still ongoing thing?
Governor Barber was real...
He was good on wrapping up something.
He did a great job. He established incentive program for our, Mississippi keeps suppliers in Mississippi. And so Mississippi pretty well retained all the tier one suppliers. There hopefully, there's going to be expansion, is what I'm told, with Toyota, and if there be another wave of these suppliers coming into the area, then that's why I think we all got to be prepared for that. So hopefully we can have our shot at them the next...
Well, anything... Well, you know, if you have a hundred jobs, a lot of these are good jobs, or two-hundred jobs. I tell the story about what happened in Mercedes-Benz and around Tuscaloosa. My wife and I went to Germany to meet with a lot of small businesses, said, you come here. Most of them didn't know, you know, they'd make one product, part of a Mercedes. We got fifty-something companies. They're not all in Tuscaloosa, you know, they're within eighty, a hundred miles. But we've got to create. We didn't, but the cause of the system, the dynamic, created about, you know, thousands of jobs. And you'd be surprised what a payroll can do. You know what a payroll is, is county, whether it's in this town, this town, other towns, the whole area. We...
Our average age is about forty in this county, and it shows that our young folks are leaving, and we've got to change that trend.
Well, all I can do is try to, I do believe if we could change the tax code, it would help a lot in America. Fundamentally restructuring the tax code. I know if seven percent of the people are paying seventy percent of the taxes, something's wrong in America. If fifty percent of the people are paying zero in taxes, something's wrong. So the tax code is made up for whoever could lobby, you know, to get something done. I personally don't believe anybody should pay over twenty-five percent of their income in taxes. I have a big divide between me and the president, you know, on this, because it takes money and investment to create jobs out there. We'll all be better off with a fair, transparent tax code. People would understand, and business could plan with certainty. We don't have that today. Anybody else? These young people here, I don't want, any of them, if you want to go to Westport, Annapolis, Military Academy, we're looking for good people. I've nominated a lot of smart people. We've just got a class from all over the state of going, one, it saves your parents a lot of money, and secondly, it would be a great education, and it also teaches leadership, you know, as part of this. And that's why we have those academies, and I have sent people to this county there, and they've done very well, as you know. If nobody's going to ask me anything, I'm going to mingle with you and drink water, listen to you, and I told some of the TV people I talked with. Thank you for coming out. I'm going to go from here later on over to Red Bay and tour the motorhome, Timman Motor Plant. They started that, small business, grown to a lot of jobs in the area. That's what we need in America, I think. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a mustache now. I'm going to do a mustache joint.
I look more like a coward than I always would. But all the other powers are big and they're not going to win.
There's a lot of things good in Washington. It's not good, it's not bad. We're building, I'm the one economic power in the world, and that's good. Have a creative, enough jobs for the people, not being a magnate, getting on the right road, I hope. And that's not as good as we'd like. We have a question in this country, and that's not good. So we've got a mixture there, but this country is too important not to right the ship the right way, and what we need to do is get together and suit America first. I don't know. It might, well, I'd like to, I'd like to see us working together for America. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.